And at this time, I would like to call this meeting to order. And I would like to ask everybody to please rise and stand up. And I know this item is not on the agenda, but it is in our hearts that I am going to call for a moment of silence for Trooper Sanchez, who has passed. And our dearest sympathy goes and condolences goes to the family of Trooper Sanchez. Obviously, we are a city that has mourned before, and we will mourn right next to them because first responders are definitely very, very, very dear to our hearts. So at this time, please rise and let's have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting agenda item number two, the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to ask Mr. Perez to lead us in that.
Yes, Mayor, if we can please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. And the invocation will be by Pastor Bill Duke from First United Methodist Church. And our pledge of allegiance to follow from Troop 1849 by Our Lady of Walupi Church will lead our pledge of allegiance with scouts attending will be Erin Ochoa, Jaden Driscoll, and John David Garza. Thank you.
Will you bow your heads with me? Gracious Father of us all, Master of the world, we call upon your wisdom and your guidance. Again, instruct us, Lord, in the decisions that we make as individuals, but also, Lord, instruct us as we make decisions that govern the city. I pray your blessings upon our mayor and our city councilman. We pray your blessings again on those two who guard our city and protect us. Send the power of your Holy Spirit. May we again make our decisions based upon your wonderful mercy and grace. I pray this in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Lord.
Ladies and gentlemen, will you please put your right hand over your heart? And may you please repeat the pledge of allegiance after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Let me ask the troop and the troop masters to come forward, plead with us for a picture. And is the preacher still here? If you could step forward with us so we can take a picture and put it in our history books for our city. Thank you, thank you. Congratulations. Special note from Troop, what is it, 1940, what is it, 1849? The troop, they just organized as a troop. And I'm hoping that this is one of their first public appearances other than being in Our Lady Walupi Church. And thank you, thank you for creating, the sponsors especially, to create. You know, where the City of Mission has always been a promoter of youth development, and we will be continuing supporting you all in every aspect that we can. Not only you, but every troop that's in our city, inside our city. And without further ado, I will call for the next agenda item, which is Employee of the Month recognition. Ms. Mungia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we'd like to recognize our employee of the month for the month of May and June. And we'll start with the month of May. For the month of May, our employee of the month is Susie, the Luna Susie. If you could please join me over here. Susie has been at the City of Mission for 19 years. In the month of May, she completed her 19th year as a City of Mission employee. Susie started as an administrative assistant and has worked her way up over the years to her current position of City Planner. Susie is being nominated because of her hard work, dedication, and loyalty to the City of Mission. Susie has always been loyal and hardworking to all of her supervisors. She knows all aspects of the planning department, from administration to operations. She has also taken additional duties and roles. These duties include formulating the department's budget, assisting with policy changes within the department, and the training of new staff. Susie also does not leave until the task is complete. She is a vital and valuable asset to the planning department. Susie, thank you for all you do.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. Susie started in the year of 2000, and she started as a clerk typist, and she worked her way up to administrative assistant that same year. As administrative assistant, she did everything from putting together the agendas, send out all the notices, and she also prepared the city council items for the directors of the department. So it's been a great honor, I guess, to nominate Susie. And now she's our City Planner, and we're very privileged to have her in the department.
Thank you.
We also would like to recognize our employee of the month for the month of June, which is Christina Garza from the Economic Development. Christina, if you can please come up here. Christina is very passionate and aims to deliver the highest level of instruction and involvement with all of the programs that she handles. Christina has been instrumental in the creation of multiple programs that benefit students in the high school grade levels, and through her program instills leadership qualities in all of her participants. Due to the focus and impact of her programs, Christina played a vital role in helping the City of Mission obtain the All-America City designation. Three of the five programs that were presented were economic development programs, and they helped the judges understand how in Mission we take a very active role in educating, involving, and developing our citizens. Christina is constantly looking for ways to partner with the community and school districts to continue improving programs while looking for ways to cut budget expenses. The programs have a lasting effect, and we see many more individuals want to participate in the programs because of the level of professionalism and benefit. Christina stepped up to the plate this past month and embraced her role as Ruby the Girl Fruit for the All-America City presentation in Denver, Colorado. She continued to pump energy into the group and made sure to keep everyone engaged. Christina took her humorous role and turned it into a great change of position when she stepped up to answer questions for the judges in a very professional and passionate manner. Christina, congratulations. I'm sorry, Daniel, her director, is going to say a few words.
Congratulations.
Hello, Council. I want to thank you for the opportunity for allowing us to name Christina as Employee of the Month. As we said, she's definitely been dedicated to her position and her role in the Economic Development Corporation, and really has a passion for the community. So we thank Christina for everything she does.
Oh, lots of noise.
Yeah. It's a mic. One more. Thank you. Congratulations. Call up a regular meeting agenda item number four, Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, Mayor, Council. We've got a few families here with us today. If they can please come forward as I read the proclamation. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the month of September is National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, whereas Faith Family Friends Foundation is helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support. Whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more needs to be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Whereas the City of Mission is committed to raising awareness of childhood cancer, remembering those children who lost their lives, and honoring the survivors and courageous children and families fighting this disease every single day by Going Gold. Whereas Glow Gold Walks honoring children battling cancer, Walk With Us, will be held on Wednesday, September 11th and 25th, 2019, at 7:15 p.m. at Banworth Park. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim September 2019 as Go Gold for Children with Cancer Month, and encourage citizens to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and support this cause that so deeply impacts families in every community across the country. Proclaimed on this the 26th day of August, 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Carrillo. The Chair will entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve. The proclamation is read. This is open for any quick discussions by any of the council persons. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A motion carries. The proclamation is declared.
Well, I wasn't prepared for this. But I'd like to take the time to thank our Mayor Ogaya and our city members for the proclamation of supporting childhood cancer in September. I stand here on behalf of myself. I lost my son Abraham to cancer, and I stand here for these mothers here, too. Roxanne is another of Caitlin, who will be forever mine. And then we also have Alyssa, who's still battling. She's a survivor now, so. And so, we never imagined this to ever happen to us, but it did. And by you all allowing us to proclaim this means a lot. Even if it lifts some of, you know, this grief off of us, it does, it really does, that we have support from you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all want to come over here for a picture for that? So we present the proclamations to you.
Are they going to, would they be able to?
Do you want to go in the front? Let's go to the front.
Yeah, let's go to the front. Let's go to the front of the podium. So they can see.
Regular meeting agenda item number five, presentation by Mr. Sissin.
Good evening, mayors, city council members, members of the audience. Thank you for the opportunity, allowing us to come and present the status of our 2018 Bond Projects for the record, Raoul Sissin, Drought County Drain District Number One, General Manager. I do have in the audience my lead engineer, Mr. Nois Aldivar, and I have consultants that are both on the team, B2Z engineering and LNG engineering. The two projects that I want to talk to the board about today, or the council about is our mission, our mission, oh, do I have it here?
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Our mission, Mission McCallan-Rado Alternate Project Drain, and then our Mission Lateral Project. Those two projects are major projects that are identified to serve the City of Mission in most of the urbanized areas in the City of Mission. So we do have some projects in the outskirts, some in the ETJ, and primarily, our focus has been in the, in the urbanized area of City of Mission where we had a lot of the issues of flooding. This is just an overview here of the two projects and how they interconnect. You can see Bond Project 26, excuse me, which is our Mission Lateral Project on the north side. That project commences at Benson Road, and it goes westerly all the way to Minnesota Road. You'll see that here in the detail. And then the other Bond Project 25, which is our radio alternate drain, that's a project that commences there at Interstate Two, which is USA Express 83, and it goes south and ties into our, our Mission inlet project that we have, our Mission inlet that we have south of there. So that's how the interconnectivity of those two systems work. Basically, all this water that runs east and west, goes north and south at a split point, and water comes down here. So improving this will improve flow of this system coming southerly, which impacts, should have some impact to the Mission Lateral Project. Our, the first project just we want to talk about is our McCallan, Mission McCallan-Rado Alternate Project 25. Again, this is a project that essentially is going to oversize an existing crossing that is located at Cobath and that currently goes underground approximately about this area here, just north of Uvalde, and comes through and exits over here. It goes through the back of these homes here, under, underneath in the yards, arch plates that are in place. So what we're proposing to do is remove some restrictions here, channel line, the ditch itself, and then come westerly and southerly with another box structure to get more flow into the Mission inlet. The Bond Project originally, the original Bond Project amount is 7,181,250. The preliminary construction estimate right now is at 5.9 million. The fee is at 566,000. We do have one parcel that we're looking at acquiring. We're still debating whether or not we're going to need that, but we have identified one. We had the original kickoff meeting April 18th. Project's about 33 percent advanced. We anticipate having all the hydraulics and hydrology at the end of this month. We have slated plans for design by the end of the year in October. We want to start the bid process beginning of the year, and we anticipate about seven months of construction. So if everything works as planned by August of next year, the first project on the south side should be in the ground. The other big, major project that we have in City of Mission is our Mission Lateral Project. And this is a major project, as you're aware, as I mentioned, this out falls into the ditch that we have along Benson Road. And this system goes all the way, actually stops at Minnesota, but it does continue via our Goodwin Drain, and our Palm View Lateral goes all the way west to Abim Road. So there's a lot of area that this system services. We have looked at the area and broken down the phases, and you'll see on the next slide why we have this plan of action so we can get some construction started already on the downstream end, obviously, and working our way upstream. The Bond budget's 12,779,500. Preliminary construction cost estimate's 11 million. The fee is right at a million. We had 12 parcels to acquire. We had our design kickoff meeting in July. Our hydraulics, again, we anticipate having the overall hydraulics adopted by the end of this month. We have, this is for the overall planned phases, and I'll go into details here, but project completion, we anticipate everything being completed by May of 2021. So if you look over here to the right, we have broken down into the four phases of construction, plan development and construction. We have Phase One from the Benson just west of Glasgow Road. Our goal is to get the plans ready by next month so we can put it out for bid and then award the construction sometime by the end of the year, we're hoping by November, December at the latest, and start complete, start construction completed by May of next year. Phase Two, which starts at west of Glasgow and continues to Conway Road, that one, December of this year, the plans, next year, bid it out and award, and by June of 2020 next year, we anticipate having that set of construction in place. Now, the third and fourth phases get a little bit more, not, I guess, challenging because of some right of way we have to acquire. The first two phases are all working within the existing right of way that we have, so that's why you see the efficiency and the plan development and the construction schedule that we have laid out, that we believe we can stay on, because there is no right of acquisition in these phases. When you start getting west of Conway Road, we have some parcels we have to acquire for detention facilities that we're looking at developing. And just for the information purposes, those detention facilities are dry facilities. They only are used during the event. Once the water recedes, they go back to dry area. So it's an opportunity for the city to look at working with the drains district on developing parks or things like that, you know? That's another option that you have there. We could have those discussions later on. But those areas will be west of Conway. The Conway Crossing, we anticipate May 2021. However, the tech stop coordination is key there, obviously. We have to cross Conway with a structure across there to get more water downstream. The current existing structure at Conway is the, the area that is holding water back right now, based on the hydraulics that we have to date. Once LNG finalizes them, they'll confirm that. But west for sure, we believe that that crossing needs to be upgraded, or an additional crossing needs to be done. So that's why it says here, coordination with tech stop will definitely could impact our schedule. And then we have Inspiration Road and Minnesota Road. We anticipate having those plans ready by 2020 of March of next year. And again, bidding everything by May, and then completing everything by May of 2021. These two sections, as I mentioned, because of the tech stop challenges that we may have coordinating with them, the cost of that, and also the actual acquisition of the detention areas and working on that, you know, that could affect the timeline. But once H&amp;H is fully complete, we'll start the process of reaching out to the landowners and start the acquisition process. We don't obviously want to acquire any land until we have determined that that's the best location for those facilities to be implemented and get the most impact to the water surface elevation that we're trying to lower. So once we have that in place, we'll start the acquisition, a portion of the work. But we will be moving very efficiently in the first two phases up to, excuse me, up to Conway Road. By June of next year, we anticipate having those, that facility fully constructed. Just brief presentation of the two major projects we have in the Mission area, so I'll open it up for any questions or anything the board may have.
Any questions from the council? Thank you. Good job. Very comprehensive.
Yes, sir.
You know, very informative also.
Of course, we're always open, Mayor, council members. Any questions you may have regarding a certain area that we're working on, we'll continue to communicate with your engineering staff and what we're doing. JP's been very instrumental in getting information to us and vice versa, so we'll continue to do that, those efforts and keep you briefed on how we're progressing, but we feel good about staying on our timeline on those, on those couple of sections, get that done before the June of next year. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Sissin.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Moving right along, regular meeting agenda item number six, Ms. Enriquez.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm filling in for Ms. Enriquez today. She's actually representing the City of Mission in our tourism efforts at the unveiling of UTRGV's new hospitality and tourism program that's going on at the moment. But just to give you guys a quick, a quick update on what we've got going on at the chamber, next, on September 3rd, we will be hosting our hospitality and tourism meeting over at Brick Fire Pizza at 9:30 in the morning. We invite all of our tourism assets and hotel leaders to continue their efforts in planning and organizing. I know, Mayor, you've been very involved, so we appreciate that and continued support from the city on these efforts and rolling them out. September 5th, we are teaming up with Texas Regional Bank to celebrate their five-year anniversary of their branch off of, off of Griffin Parkway and Shady Road. They're going all out. It's a big event. They're really wanting to get the city out and our business community out to celebrate this milestone for their, for their location. We have our Buenas Tarde's luncheon coming up on September 12th at 11:30 a.m. at the Mission Event Center. And on September 25th, the chamber is hosting an active shooter training being put on by our Mission Crime Stoppers at 10 a.m. at the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce Conference Center. And of course, we're still underway. We have our committee that is continuing the planning efforts for our annual banquet gala taking place on October 17th, also at the Mission Event Center. That is all for my report unless the council has questions.
Thank you. Any questions by the council to the chamber? Any questions? Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Regular meeting agenda item number seven, departmental reports. Council, this is your time to ask any questions to any of the department heads. We have motion to approve the departmental reports as presented. And a second also. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, all same sign. A motion carries. Regular meeting agenda item number eight, citizens' participation. Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, Mayor, we have Mr. Jim Barnes.
Mr. Barnes, the Chair recognizes you, sir. Name and address for the record.
Hello, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Jim Barnes. I live in Mission and am a member of the Avos. I have one major request to make tonight. There are city meetings that probably should have legal or law enforcement people there. Not necessarily all of them, but some of them that I've been to probably should have a law enforcement there like we have here. Otherwise, I have one comment about the budget. I know you worked hard. I know you've worked hard. But you're thinking about ten percent increase in property taxes, and the people of Mission have to probably tighten their belt, and I know you've worked hard to tighten yours, our cities. Please continue to work on tightening the belt. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Ms. Carrillo, anybody else?
Uh, yes, Mayor, uh, we have Frances Ann.
Coranza Riley, Mr. Coranza Riley, the chair recognizes you, sir, and please, uh, name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
Good evening. Still have a bad voice. Uh, Frances Ann Coranza, I'm Mission resident, three-seven-zero-nine, uh, San Clemente, in, uh, Las Vegas, at La Gales Canita, which is part of Sherri Land Plantation. Uh, I'd like to, uh, kind of change my comments tonight a little bit. I see some things that are happening that are good, um, um, for this bond issue of thirteen million dollars. I'd like to say that I spent forty-five dollars to, uh, help prevent, uh, our pond, irrigation pond, from flooding again if we have a torrential rain and a storm, uh, because our homeowner association, uh, couldn't manage that. So, uh, I'm all for not flooding any part of, uh, Mission. Um, also, uh, I still am perplexed why I have a resident that lives in the Gating Community where I am, uh, telling me that she's called the city, she's called the, uh, homeowners' Association property management people. It's now been nine months. Her street still doesn't have a sign on it. Uh, this is not very, uh, acceptable when you talk about emergencies and all that. Her complaint is she has people that, that she's trying to tell them how to come to their house, and they, you know, I guess, maybe, maybe with GPS, uh, they make it do that. Uh, also, I wanna comment that, um, we have signs down around, um, um, Las, excuse me, uh, Las Indios Parkway, around this traffic circle. They've been down for months and months. Again, the, I don't live on the traffic circle, but we have people that should be looking at that. We pay money for people to do that. These signs have been down for three or four months. Uh, also, there's a, a fence that's broken at, um, Inahosa School and, uh, City Park in Inahosa, and I've communicated that myself, but again, it's not my park, and it's not my house, but it's in my neighborhood, and I think with today's environment, allowing fast egress or en- entering or egress of the schoolyard is a very, very, uh, thing we should, uh, thing that should be looked at quickly, and this has been that way for a long time. Uh, also, I'm, wanna mention, um, and I'll give this to, uh, on the, uh, the American Legion, uh, post ninety-three is going to have a celebration for the Air Force, uh, veterans, uh, on September eighteenth, uh, twenty-nineteen at seven PM. Uh, they're also still very, um, uh, heavily involved in trying to organizing for the Veterans Parade in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' participation, Mrs. Carrillo?
No, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Carrillo. Uh, moving right along, we'd like to move to regular agenda item one point zero, which is our public hearings, and I'll call for agenda item one point one A, Mr. Acevedo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item one point one A is a public hearing request to abandon twenty feet of street right-of-way Eastman in a point-one-two-four acre tract of land, more or less. This has been the west two-hundred-and-seventy-one-point-eleven feet of an existing tw- twenty-foot street right-of-way, which is located adjacent to the north lines of lots five and six of Yule subdivision. And if the council's inclined to approve this request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On August fourteenth of two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider the abandonment request. The twenty-by-two-hundred-and-seventy-one-point-eleven, uh, area to be abandoned is along the west sides of Raglin Street and extends two-hundred-and-seventy-one-point-eleven feet west between lots thirty-three on the north side and lots five and six of Yule subdivision on the south side. If you recall, earlier in two thousand and eighteen, um, a similar request was approved between lot thirty-three and lot four of Yule subdivision, and, uh, the owner of lot thirty-three purchased, uh, lot four of Yule subdivision, and he was gonna build a house, which he has started. You can see the construction there on the north side of the slide. Well, now, the residents of the two lots on the south side would like, uh, the similar consideration. Uh, they would like to take advantage of that twenty-foot of, uh, of street right-of-way. Uh, it's a street that will not be built. Uh, there's already, um, items or, or houses that were built out on the west side of the property, which, uh, borders, uh, Glasscock. So, uh, it did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The board unanimously recommended approval of the request to abandon this twenty, twenty-foot strip of property, and, uh, staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing item. Item one point one is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Acevedo. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm gonna close this public hearing, and I'm gonna open it for any comments from any other city council.
I have a quick question, Mayor.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Who is the owner of record on, of that strip?
The City of Mission. It's, this is-
City of Mission is owner of record.
This is a strip of land that was supposed to be a future, uh, street, and, um, those plans are no longer plans for the city. But it is a city right-of-way.
So, if we abandon the right-of-way, what, what's the next?
It goes back to the tax rule. Uh, the lot owner on lot thirty-three on the north side would get ten feet of the, of the property, as would the lot owners of lots, uh, five and six on the south side of Yule subdivision.
Legal, is that, what? Is that the process?
In terms of what, abandoning?
Uh, abandoning, and then the, the ownership?
Yes.
How it transfers from, uh, the City of Missin- Mission to the, to adjoining?
Equally.
Equally, okay.
Any, any other question? I will entertain the motion in favor or against the ordinance.
I move for approval.
We have a motion on the floor to approve ordinance forty-eight fourteen.
Second.
And we have a second. And this opening for final discussion by any of the board? No final discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All, suppose, same sign. Uh, motion carries. One point one is, is approved, Mr. Acevedo, and I'm calling for one point one B.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item one point one B is a public hearing for rezoning of a six-point-five-four-five acre tract of land, being the north two-hundred-and-forty-one feet of lot twenty-seven-dash-two, west addition to Sherri Land subdivision. The property is currently zoned AOI, and the intent is to rezonate to R-one, single-family residential. Leonel Olivares is the applicant, and if the council's inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On August fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The site is located approximately fifteen-hundred feet south of west Mile Two Road along the west side of Los Ebanos. The surrounding zones include agriculture open interim to the north, east, and west. To the south, uh, the properties are zoned single-family residential. The existing land uses are to the north and east. We do have, uh, vacant agriculture land, uh, and we also have the water treatment plant, um, also to the east. To the north, we have vacant ag- agricultural land, and to the south, we have a single-family residential community. This is where Crystal Estates Phases Ones, Two, Three are located at. The future land use map does request this area as a low-density residential, thus, the request to rezone the property to R-one is consistent with the future land use map. There was public opposition, um, I believe, two residents, Mr. Risica and, and another, uh, property owner in the area, uh, did oppose, uh, the rezoning, and, uh, their issues were with loud music coming from the residential subdivision and with fireworks. However, I did, uh, alert Mr. Risica that those are, uh, city issues that can be addressed through our fire department and our police department. And, um, the board did approve this rezoning. It was approved unanimously. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item one point one B is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this, this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm gonna close this public hearing and open it for any comments from any of the council persons.
I'm ordered to approve.
I, uh, will entertain the motion to approve ordinance forty-eight fifteen. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second. This, I open it for final discussion. No final discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All, suppose, same sign. Motion carries. I was gonna say, you abstain for the record. Ms. Carrillo's abstained. Okay. One point one C.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item one point one C is a public hearing for rezoning of a seven-point-five-five-seven acre tract, also being a part or portion of shares three, four, and five of San Jose subdivision. The property is currently zoned AOI, and the intent is to rezonate to R-one A, large lot single-family. The applicant is Jose Manuel and Ismael Garcia, and if the council's inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On August fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located approximately a hundred-and-fifty feet north of Trinity Road, along the east side of Stewart Road. The surrounding zones include large lot, single-family to the north and to the east. To the east, we also have single-family residential, as, as well as to the south. To the west, we have agriculture open interim. The, the cemetery borders this property to the west. The existing land uses are single-family residential to the north and to the east and to the south and to the west. We do have, uh, San Jose Cemetery. The future land use map does reflect this as a lower-density area, thus, thus the request for large lots, single-family lots is consistent with the future land use map. There was no public opposition. In the P and Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item one point one C is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm gonna close this, uh, public hearing and open it for discussion from any of the council persons.
I move for approval.
I have a motion to approve ordinance forty-eight sixteen, and I have a second. This, I open it for final discussion by any of the council persons. No discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All, suppose, same sign. Ordinance forty-eight sixteen is approved, Mr. Acevedo. Call for one point five, one D.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item one point one D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to move in a wood frame home on property zoned R-four, mobile and modular home. This is at twenty-eight oh seven Estevan Street, being lot seventy-nine of Inspiration Manor subdivision. Again, the property is zoned R-four, and, uh, the applicant is Guadalupe Ramirez, and if the council's inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On August fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located between Inspiration Road and Gab- Gabriel Street along the west side of Estevan Street. Ms. Ramirez desires a conditional use permit to be allowed to move in a single-family structure complying with the R-one minimum setbacks. Although the property is zoned R-four, typical, uh, typical R-four homes are allowed, um, but we also consider R-one homes when they do meet the R-one requirements. This lot is sixty by one hundred, which complies with the minimum standards for an R-one lot, and, uh, in moving this home, she would also, uh, meet all of the setbacks that are required, the, the twenty-foot front setback, the six-foot side setback, and the ten-foot rear setback. We did have a chance to inspect the home, and, uh, the home is in good shape, and we have allowed others to move in site-built homes to this particular subdivision just directly across the street. There was an approval granted to a, a resident, uh, in which the request was similar. There was no opposition during the P and Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. The staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditional use permit being transferable to others. If Ms. Ramirez sells the house, we, uh, would allow for the new owner to also, uh, carry over this conditional use permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item one point one D is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Come in, ma'am. Just state your name and, and the address for the record, ma'am.
Guadalupe Ramirez. I'm actually the owner requesting the permit, and, um, address is one forty-six South Mayberry Mission. Um, I don't have anything to say about the permit. It's just that I'm new to this process, and I wanted to recognize your staff, uh, Mayor, his council members. Um, they've been great, uh, Mr. Acevedo. It's been about a month that we've been working with him. He actually gave me a call personally, told me exactly the process, um, so they've been great. Thank you. I really do appreciate that. His staff, Ms. Jessica Muñoz, um, has been, um, excellent in the process, have been communicating, you know, everything that's been going on. Even this morning, I got a call from Ms. Maribel Quintanilla that today was the, the meeting, so, wanted to just recognize your staff, that, um, they've been great in the process.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, therefore, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'm gonna open it for any comments from any of the council persons.
I'll move to approve.
Yeah, we, we have a motion to approve, and a second to approve ordinance forty-eight seventeen. And this, I open it for, uh, discussion by any of the council person. No discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All, suppose, same sign. Motion carries, um, ordinance forty-eight seventeen is approved, Mr. Acevedo, and I'm calling for, for one point one E.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item one point one E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window at El Tropical. This is at seven-hundred-and-eight North Inspiration Road, Suite One of Lot One, Rival Sebas subdivision. The property is zoned C-three, and the applicant is Veronica Sepeda. And if the council's inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On August fourteenth, two, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located four-hundred feet south of Expressway Eighty-three Frontage Road along the east side of Inspiration Road. Ms. Sepeda, who's also the owner and the developer, uh, would like to be considered for a conditional use permit at her commercial suite. Uh, the picture on the bottom shows where the drive-through window would be located, and, uh, traffic would stack up, um, along the back of the building and make their way, um, to the drive-through window and then exit, uh, back, uh, out the same way that they came in. Um, it, it is noted that we did, uh, look at the parking situation. Uh, the Commercial Plaza does meet the parking requirements for three suites. We also considered that when stacking, as you can see here on the exhibit, uh, it would allow for stacking of up to five vehicles, so this is also something that we consider when we're, uh, evaluating the parking. The hours of operation would be from Monday through Sunday, from one PM to eleven PM, total of two employees during the operating hours. And, uh, the plaza's still under construction, but, uh, it will be, it will be meeting the parking and landscaping requirements. There was no opposition during the P and Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of this conditional use permit for the drive-through window. Staff is recommending approval for a one-year period to assess the new operation. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item one point one E is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Yes, ma'am. Just state your name and your address for the record, ma'am.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mr. Acevedo, uh, what kind of a business is this, sir?
It's a snack shop.
A snack shop. Okay, I'm here to say, um, that for drive-throughs, it's very, very crucial that we have appropriate drive-throughs because, uh, persons with ADA, physical, uh, disabilities such as my grandson, a lot of times, by the time we load off the wheelchair, or many children who are autistic, by the time you take the kids in, so it's better to have, uh, drive-throughs. So I know that, um, sometimes it can be loud and stuff, but, uh, we do need to make So I know that sometimes it can be loud and stuff, but we do need to make sure that we have a lot of drive-throughs, and make sure that on the outside, that the sidewalks are appropriate. But I approve, I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you, Ms. Bean. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to open it for any discussion for any of the council persons.
I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve, ordinance forty-eight eighteen, and I'll open it for further discussion by any of the council persons. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance forty-eight eighteen is approved, Mr. Azavell, and I'm calling for one point one F.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item one point one F is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Chepuerco Restaurant Bar. This is at two oh five North Sherry Road, Suite A, Lot One, South Sherry Commercial subdivision. The property is zoned C three and Naim Entertainment Group. LLC Antonio Naim is the applicant. On August fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Sherry Road and Salinas Street, which is East First Street, along the west side of Sherry Road. The applicant desires to occupy a vacant suite thereon, and there is an outdoor setting as well. This used to be previously, it used to be Tacovice, and it operated for a couple of months, and they've since closed down and opened up a new location at the mall, so they left this property available, and Mr. Naim has rented the suite and would like to continue with a similar type of operation. It is noted that the applicant is proposing a bar component within the restaurant, which requires the use of section one point five six three eight of the zoning code, which states that bars, cocktail, lounges, taverns, cantinas, saloons, dance halls, discotheques, discos, and nightclubs, the property line of any of the above-mentioned businesses must have, and with late hours past ten PM, must be at least three hundred feet from the nearest residence, church, school, or publicly-owned property. There is one residence to the north, and there are a few mobile homes also to the north within three hundred feet. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Thursday from eleven AM to eleven PM, and Friday through Sunday from eleven AM to two AM. A total of twenty-six employees will be manning the operation. Parking is held in common at this commercial suite. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to a two-year reevaluation from the issuance of the TABC license. This puts our conditional use permit in line with their TABC license. A waiver of the three hundred foot separation requirement from residential homes, that they comply with all fire, health, and building code requirements, and that they obtain a business license. Our city manager is also recommending approval as well. This is a public hearing, item one point one F is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Acevedo. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore I'm going to close this public hearing and open it for any of the city council persons for any discussion or questions.
Mayor, I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, ordinance forty-eight nineteen. In this I open it for further discussion by any of the council person. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance forty-eight nineteen is approved, and I'm calling for one point one G.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item one point one G is a public hearing for a conditional use permit renewal. This is to keep a twenty-four by sixty portable building at nine fifteen West Expressway eighty-three, being Lot One, Nido de Aguilar subdivision. This is a public area, this is the Luz para las Naciones, the church, and if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On August fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of South Olmo Street and the south side of Expressway eighty-three, Frontage Road. The applicant wishes to renew his conditional use permit to keep a twenty-four by sixty portable building for instructional use. This CUP was last approved on June eighth of two thousand and sixteen by the Planning and Zoning and City Council for a period of three years. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday from eight AM to three thirty PM. A total of two teachers and forty students occupy the portable building. This is part of their classrooms, they do have a site-built building where they give classes, but being that they were growing, they needed to add this portable building. I did talk to the representative of the church, and I did tell him that while we support the portable building, we would like to see them eventually build a site-built building for their institutional use. Parking and landscaping are existing, and they meet code. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this item, there was no opposition. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing, item one point one G is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit renewal? I do not see anybody approaching the podium, therefore I'm going to close the public hearing and open it for any discussion from any of the council persons, any questions? No questions, I can entertain the motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second to approve, ordinance forty-eight twenty. In this I'll ask for final discussion from any of the council persons. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance forty-eight twenty is approved, and I'm calling for one point one H.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item one point one H is a public hearing for a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Mariscos El Siete Mares. This is at twenty-three oh one, East Griffin Parkway, being Suite D, lots ten through twelve of Big Orange subdivision. The property is zoned C three, General Commercial, and Mariscos El Siete Mares LLC is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to renew this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On August fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located within a commercial plaza located on the northwest corner of Citrus and Griffin Parkway. The CUP was last approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on June twenty-eighth of two thousand and seventeen, and at which time the permit was set up to renew alongside their TABC license. The hours of operation are every day from eleven AM to eight PM, a total of four employees man the operation during any given shift. They're meeting the parking requirements, it's held in common at this commercial plaza, and there are also no churches or public or private schools within three hundred feet of the restaurant. There were no incidents to be reported on this particular site, and there was also no opposition during the PNC meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval of the renewal. Staff is recommending approval for a period of between now and June sixth of two thousand and twenty-one, at which time the applicant will have to renew their CUP and TABC license. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing, item one point one H is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Azavell. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore I'm going to close this public hearing, and I'm going to open it for any discussion by any of the council persons.
Mayor, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and a second to approve, ordinance forty-eight twenty-one. In this I do ask open for any final comments from any of the council persons. No comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance forty-eight twenty-one is approved, Mr. Azavell, and we're closing all public hearings. I'm calling for two point O consent agenda item, keep in mind that anybody from the council can pull any of the agenda items of two point one, two point two, two point three, two point four, two point five, two point six, resolution number sixteen ten, and two point seven, resolution number sixteen eleven, and two point eight, resolution number sixteen twelve, and two point nine, two point ten, two point eleven, two point twelve, or two point thirteen. If you have no number that you want to pull as a council, then I would entertain the motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, all agenda items to include resolution sixteen ten, sixteen eleven, and sixteen twelve are approved, and I'll call for three point zero, which is approval and authorization, and I'm going to be calling for item number three point one, Mr. Azavell, preliminary plat.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item three point one is a preliminary plat approval of Carisales subdivision. This is a seventy-six point eight seven acre tract of land out of block sixteen, Texan Gardens subdivision. This is in a rural ETJ, and the developer is Norberto Salinas, the engineer is South Texas Infrastructure. The subject site is located at or near the northeast corner of mile six road and Western Road. Forty-eight single-family residential lots are being proposed via this subdivision. The water CCN does belong to Awasud, and the sewer that's being proposed for these forty-eight residential lots is through onsite septic tanks. It is noted that the city sewer line is approximately four and a quarter miles away from this particular site. Drainage is being proposed via an internal storm system with inlets in the streets to collect surface runoff from the lots and the streets, and drain directly into a regional detention facility that is part of the seventy-six point eight seven acres. Part of the plat will be the dedication of a large chunk of land that's going to be used by the Idalo County Drainage District as a regional detention facility. The Planning and Zoning Commission and staff are recommending approval, as is our city manager and other department heads. Item three point one is now before you.
What's the interest of the council?
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve three point one, do I hear a second?
No, second.
We have a motion and a second, and this I open it for discussion for any of the council persons.
So the reason that they're only getting forty some odd lots out of the seventy-six acres is because of that detention area that they're going to?
Yeah, you can see it to the east of the property.
Okay.
Any other questions? No other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three point one is approved, three point two, Mr. Azavell.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item three point two is a preliminary plat approval of Deloro subdivision, unit number five. This is a re-subdivision of ten point seven three one acres of land out of the south end of Portion fifty-two. This is in the Rhodes PUD. The developers Rhodes Enterprises, Inc., and the engineer is Melden and Hunt. The subject site is located approximately three quarters of a mile east of Schubach, along the north side of one mile south, mile one south. This is the fifth phase of the Deloro subdivision development. Fifty-six single-family residential lots are being proposed. Water and sewer is City of Mission Water and Sewer. With regards to drainage, the developers proposing to install eight curb inlets and a thirty-inch reinforced concrete pipe, which will drain along Tecate and flow into an existing drainage along the north side of the property. That drainage ditch will feed into another system in the City of Mission. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this, and staff is also recommending approval, as is our city manager and other department heads. Item three point two is now before you.
Mayor, move for approval.
You have moved to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, I have a question.
Yes.
City water is ours?
Yes, water and sewer, City of Mission.
CCN, ours, okay. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, three point two is approved, three point three, preliminary plat, Mr. Azavell.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item three point three is a preliminary plat approval of Periquito subdivision. This is a seven point five five seven acre tract, also being a part or portion of shares three, four, and five of San Jose subdivision. This is the property that was rezoned earlier this evening from AOI to R one. The developers, Jose Manuel Garcia and Ismael Garcia, and the engineers, B I G Engineering Group. The subject site is located near the intersection of Trinity and Frio Street, along the north side of Trinity. Five large lot, single-family lots are being proposed. This would be serviced by City of Mission for both water and sewer, and they are requesting a variance, and the variance is to have a subdivision that's going to be private and gated. Now, the variance also includes to have a twenty-foot paved street on forty feet of right-of-way. Your typical street is thirty-two feet back-to-back. Now, they are requesting a variance to have a twenty-foot street instead of a thirty-two foot street. The reasoning is that this is only for five large lot, single-family homes. It's a family partition, and they don't feel that it's necessary to have a thirty-two foot street, they want to keep it more of a homely feeling and not have a thirty-two feet street. They are proposing a hammerhead, so should the fire department need to go in, they can, I guess, back up and back out of that hammerhead. When we asked the developer about the possibility of extending the streets, they did propose to have a parking facilities, in case there's ever parties, they would dedicate an area on one of the lots to have additional parking, so that they can keep the traffic off of the streets. The drainage that's being proposed, this subdivision does border a drainage, the Idalo County Drainage Ditch Number One, they're on the east side, so they will have a detention facility where the arrow is pointing to, and it will have a bleeder line that will drain directly into that ditch that's there on the east side of the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve the variance request as presented. Staff is also recommending approval, as is our city manager and other department heads, and item three point three is now before you.
Mayor, I move to approve.
We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve three point three.
I have a question.
And I'll open it for discussion, go ahead, ma'am.
I'm a little concerned about the twenty-foot street. That's, I mean, usually when we have the gated subdivisions, they have to comply with all our codes and ordinances. I understand that it's going to be a family thing, but it's not necessarily guaranteed that that's going to be the case later on, and I'm concerned about emergency vehicles in and out of the area, because they do have the right-of-way, they just don't want to pave it all the way, is that correct?
That's correct, they do have forty feet of right-of-way, they just want it to look more homely, they don't want a big thirty-two foot street, they want to make it look like a little driveway, it's heavily brushed, and they want to keep it with like a ranch-style feel.
And our marshal and our chief, you approve this, chief?
Our fire marshal approved it.
Yeah, but he also has to look at these fire trucks, aerial trucks, and ambulances coming in and out, you know?
Good evening. I do have concerns in regards to the entry of our apparatus with a twenty-foot right-of-way, that is considered in a commercial aspect a fire lane. In commercial applications, when you do have a fire hydrant, it has to be a minimum of twenty-six feet, a minimum, in a commercial environment. This is a residential which our requirements to ordinance is thirty-two feet back-to-back. So yes, we do have a hammerhead for turning around our apparatus, and there's no designation in regards to the plat stating the location of the parking lot, or what size, or what's the capacity of the parking. But initially, also the concern is that we have one entry point, which the gate is sixteen feet, as I heard. Under code, yes, it's allowable, but in two-way traffic, it is two, two sixteen, or wider. So overall, I'm against of the variance due to emergency issues if needed to respond to. to this location. And my concern is, is parking overflow. And without knowing the amount of parking that they're proposing, at this point, I'm against the proposal.
Thank you.
Questions?
Any questions for the chief? How about for the marshal, when Marshal Galosus is here, right? Any questions, Marshal, then? Any concerns that you have?
My first.
What does the council want to do?
Ruben, did you make the?
So we do.
Do you want to undo your motion?
Yeah, I can.
You want to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
We have a motion withdrawn, and do I hear the withdrawal of the second also? The withdrawal of the second, so we can bring it back for further discussion. Is the owner here? You know, maybe he wants to.
The engineer.
The engineer, maybe you want to. Like this.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Renee Barrera representing the owners for this, like a family partition, the large lots. The owners were requesting to have a ranch-style feel to the subdivision. The entrance to the subdivision, to propose subdivision, is limited, it's actually eighteen feet, I think eighteen feet nine inches that we measured for the entrance that we have. So they wanted to maintain that same feel through the subdivision with a twenty-foot wide road. One of the things that we're proposing as well is a lay-down curb, where it's just a, it looks like a valley gutter, like a two-foot valley gutter. So cars can go over easily and get out of the way into the side. But one thing that we can do is, you know, a couple of things, I think, is a plat note indicating that there'll be no further amended plats to this, like someone trying to subdivide additional lots, you know, make them more dense. Another thing is maybe specify an area for parking. You know, we can, we can do that as, on the plat as well, and maybe designate it on the plat.
What about a fire lane?
Fire lane?
Like striping?
Oh, we can, yeah. I could propose striping as well, a red fire lane around the perimeter of the street. That way, there'll be no, you know, parking along the.
I think the concern is the width, the width of the, of the street. I think that's a concern of the council.
And that's, and that's what we're trying to, to come to some, yeah, to some negotiation with that, to keep the same twenty-foot width that the owners are requesting. It's a family, and they're not going to sell these lots to anybody else, it's just for their use.
Yep. But the concern, I think, is in the event of an emergency, that they're parked, that the street is not wide enough, they're parking, you know, they're parking closer to the door as possible. You know, that's what I do, you know?
Yes.
And that's what most people do, you know? And at the time of emergency, it's going to be blocking, blocking the traffic in and out, especially if we have multiple units coming in. So I think the concern of the council, as well as staff, is the width of the street, I think, more than anything else. And the placement, you know, the fact that the fire hydrant doesn't have enough space for them to operate in case of, you know, and yes, I'm in agreement, you can stripe it and so forth.
We can stripe, we have that lay-down curb, we can identify parking areas on the plat itself, the recorded plat, that would have to be utilized, you know, measures like that to help support the variance request.
Yes.
I have another question. What is, off of Trinity, what, how much access do they have into the back?
It's a twenty-four-foot access easement.
You have a twenty-four?
Twenty-four. And then there's an existing fence that fronts that area that's eighteen feet nine inches wide, that we're proposing now, a roadway through.
So isn't?
We're limited by that eighteen feet nine inches through that.
Isn't that a variance in itself? Because that's not wide enough to have access into a subdivision.
Well, the lots do meet the requirements. The right-of-way going in, on this particular plat, it shows more than forty feet. I guess they, they own the sufficient right-of-way, they just fenced it in and created, they kind of choked it, because they built like a masonry wall.
Well, I would like to see the required street on, off of Trinity. Because that's a, I mean, you're going to bottleneck right at that area. You're trying to get ambulances and, you know, fire trucks and emergency vehicles in it, into an eighteen-foot.
I think we're limited just for what the, what we have existing there, the twenty-four-foot access easement. The access is already limited to twenty-four feet by what was, what's recorded on.
On the plat.
Indeed, on the, yeah, on their property.
This item and have them kind of, you know, hash it out a little.
Well, right now, we don't have a motion, but if you want to put a motion to the.
Would that be okay with?
Would that be okay with the council to table this item and go back with staff and make, make sure that?
Mayor, you can approve the plat and table the variance.
Well, yeah, I don't want to do that. I'm just gonna, I'm going to move for, to table the item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table the item, and with the stipulation to go back and see if you, you can work, work it out, and then we can come back in the next city council meeting and, and work it with you again. You already know the concerns of our staff, you already know the concerns of the council.
Yes.
And it has to do with emergency vehicles and emergency egress in and out, you know, as far, as far as that is concerned. So, and this is open for final discussion from any of the city council persons and final questions.
I see what she's saying, the twenty-four.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion three point three has been tabled.
Thank you.
And duly recorded, Ms. Carrillo. Three point four, I call for a preliminary plat, Mr. Osavero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item three point four is a preliminary plat approval of Los Ebanos Village subdivision. This is a six point five five acre tract of land, being the north two hundred and sixteen of Lot twenty-seven dash two, West Edition Share Land subdivision. The property is zoned R1. The developers Leonel Olivares and Amparo Olivares, the engineer is Nain Engineering, LLC. The subject site is located near the northwest corner of Los Ebanos and Esperanza Avenue, just north of Crystal Estates, phases one through three. The proposal is for nineteen single-family residential lots. The lots will measure sixty-two feet by a depth of two hundred and sixteen feet. And this would have City of Mission water and sewer. And drainage will be also detained onsite, and there's a pair of inlets that will collect the water and divert the water to a drainage system on the south side of Crystal Estates. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this request. Staff is also recommending approval, as is our city manager and other department heads. Item three point four is now before you.
What is the wish of the council?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve three point four, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and you abstention. One abstention.
Okay, item three point five is a preliminary and final plat approval of the MEDC subdivision. This is a tract of land containing eighteen point eighty-three acres, being part or portion of the abandoned old Edinburgh Canal right-of-way and lots one seventy-five and one eighty-five of John H. Cherry subdivision. The property is zoned C three. The developers Mission Economic Development Corporation, and the engineer is Javier Nohosa. This is located at the northeast corner of Cherry Road and Victoria Drive. This is for a nine-lot commercial tracks, or nine-lot commercial subdivision. Development has already pretty much been completed, as you can see there on the exhibit. One street does lead traffic in and out of the proposed subdivision. Water and sewer are City of Mission, and drainage will be part of the Mission Event Center's master storm plan. Planning and zoning and staff are recommending approval, as is our city manager and other department heads. Item three point five is now before you.
I move approval.
We have a motion to approve and a second, and this is open for discussion. Any other council persons? No, no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point five is approved. Mr. Osavero, and three point six, tax collection, Ms. Vella.
Item three point six is the tax collection report for the month of July two thousand nineteen. The total tax levy was twenty million four hundred thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and nineteen cents, and the amount of collections as of July thirty-first is nineteen million six hundred and forty-two thousand ten dollars and sixty-three cents, which represents ninety-six point twenty-eight percent of the tax levy. Last year, this month, the percentage of collection was ninety-six point eighteen percent. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point six is approved. Three point seven, Mr. Pettis.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item three point seven, in accordance with the Texas Property Tax Code, city council must propose a tax rate for the City of Mission and publish the notice of property tax rate by September first. If the proposed tax rate is lower than the effective tax rate, only one public hearing is required before the adoption of the tax rate. If the proposed tax rate is higher than the effective tax rate, two public hearings are required before the adoption of the tax rate. The calculation of the effective tax rate is zero point four eight four four per hundred valuation. The calculation rollback tax rate is zero point five four one one per hundred valuation. Our current tax rate is zero point four eight six two per hundred valuation. The, the public hearings, if required, the first public hearing is to be scheduled at September the ninth, two, twenty nineteen, and the second public hearing, if required, is to be scheduled September the sixteenth, twenty nineteen. At this, it's a discussion action on proposed tax rate, take record vote, and schedule public hearings, and as discussed in the workshop that we had earlier today, Mayor.
For the recommendation, for the record, your recommendations, sir?
Yes, sir. The city manager recommendation is the rollback rate of five four, zero point five four eleven per hundred valuation.
Okay. This is open for discussion by the council, or entertain a motion.
I'm going to deny the recommendation of the proposed tax rate of point five four eleven per hundred dollar valuation, and recommend a three-cent increase for the next.
And what would that rate be, Mr. Plata?
Will be point four eight four four plus point five one four four.
Okay, and we have a motion on the floor.
Am I correct?
It's, it's three cents from our current rate, Mayor, Mr. Plata, and that would be point five one six two.
Am I correct?
Can you clarify that, Randy?
Yes, ma'am. So our current tax rate is point zero four eight six two, and, and a three cent would be?
Point four one.
Point five one six two, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So just the, the three cent even, Ruben, is what you're saying?
There's any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
No, second.
We have a motion and a second, and this is open for discussion for any of the council
I was thinking the same.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think three cent, with a half cent, put aside for like a savings or whatever.
For the front balance?
Yeah. So it'd be?
Three and a half. Three and a half cents.
Three and a half cents.
I would be okay with that change.
You would be okay with three and a half?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Plata, would you be okay with three and a half?
And the other half percent is for a savings and our front balance?
So resend your motion and do it again.
The, if that's the case, you have to officially withdraw your motion.
I withdraw my motion, Mayor.
Yeah, we have a motion withdrawal. Do I hear the second motion withdrawal? The motion withdrawal for the second, and this, our motion has, has been removed from the table. Therefore, now I will open it to entertain the motion.
Betosin, you recommended.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
What is your motion, Mr. Vella?
Three and a half cents.
I'll second, second, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second to go three point five. Three point five, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And this, I'm going to open it for one more final discussion by any of the council persons.
Mr. Pettis, can you please give us exactly how much that is?
Yes, ma'am. So the, the proposed tax rate would be zero point five six six two?
Zero point five six. Zero point five?
Zero, um, because the, a three cent would be zero point five one six two, and so a three point five would be zero point five six six two. Correct?
No, it will be point five two one two.
Five two one?
Point five two one two.
Ms. Vella, would you please to record him, so the, so the, the people in the audience, as well as, as the ones on, that are watching us will.
Yes. So a half cent would go from point forty-eight sixty-two to point fifty-two one two.
Point fifty-two one two.
Yes.
Thank you.
I apologize for that, Mr. Plata.
Yeah.
Six plus five is eleven.
Okay, any other discussion by any of the council persons?
I would like to thank staff for working really, really hard.
We haven't voted. We haven't voted.
You asked for a comment.
Oh, yeah, well, for discussion on the motion.
That's just my comment, that I'm thanking staff for a very good job and hard work, and I appreciate their efforts.
Okay.
That's all.
Any other comment that deals with the motion? I will call for, it's my duty as a chairperson to call for a record vote. A record vote simply means that I'm going to call each individual council person, and they have to declare openly how, how they're voting. And I'll start with my left, Mr. Vella.
Yes?
You.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Garcia?
Aye.
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 Me. Okay. So it's four one. Okay, three point eight. I will call for Mr. Chief Dominguez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item three point eight is authorization to accept the FY twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Other Victim Assistance Grant from the Office of the Attorney General's Crime Victims Services Division. This is a one-year grant for FY twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. The total amount of the grant is forty-two thousand dollars. This grant will allow the Mission Police Department to continue the services provided by our crime victim liaison program. There is no catch match required for this grant. The grant will be in effect from September first, twenty nineteen, through August thirty-first of twenty twenty. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve?
We have a motion and a second to approve, and this is open for discussion. Any discussion?
I move approval.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second already.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry. No?
No comments?
I, I just have a comment for.
Go ahead.
I would like to encourage your staff to look for more grant positions like this, because I know that this position has been with the city for quite some time, and it's been very effective. And I think there's much need in your department for other programs like this.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, though.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three point eight is approved. Chief Dominguez, three point nine, sir?
Item three point nine is authorization to accept one Belgian Malinois canine for the City of Mission Police Department canine program, which was donated by an anonymous citizen. The Mission Police Department received a donation of a male Malinois canine. The donation was made by a citizen who did request to remain anonymous. The canine is a male, approximately one year and five months old, and it's black and brown in color. The canine goes by the name of Primo and specializes in narcotics detection. The approximate value of the canine is about eighty-two hundred dollars, and there will be no cost to the City of Mission. City of Mission. Staff and city manager recommend approval to accept this canine into our program.
Mayor, I move for approval.
We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second? Ms. Garcia, you have a second, opening for further discussion.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
Are we gonna still call him Primo?
Seguro que sí.
Gracias.
Mexican canine.
They were in certification course, so I will hopefully bring him at the next council meeting.
Good.
During citizens' participation and...
Would you want us to vote on it first?
I know she loves taking pictures with our dogs, and I'm just afraid that they'll bite her, but...
It won't bite me.
All right, ma'am.
You want, let's vote on it first, and then...
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, I do have a citizen that wants to give you a puppy, a German Shepherd puppy.
A German Shepherd.
So, I refer him to Corporal Reeves.
Okay.
To, you know...
All right, sure, we'll look at it.
As a canine puppy.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
3.10, authorization to purchase, Ms. Rocha, you're recognized by the chair.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 3.10 is authorization to purchase via state-approved contract from Baker &amp; Taylor for library material. We want to purchase 11,500 worth of library material via state co-op contract number 715-M2. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Vella, second, and this is opening for final discussion by any of the council persons. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.10 is approved, and now 311, Ms. Mungia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 3.11 is the authorization to award contract for stop-loss insurance. Proposals were solicited for stop-loss insurance, and we accepted four responses. Proposals were evaluated, and Evolution Risk was the lowest responsible bidder. Staff and city manager recommend approval to award contract to Evolution Risk.
I'm moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is opening for discussion by any of the council persons.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Ms. Mungia, are all these new, who was the one that had it last?
A partnerie, so this is a new company.
A new company. And yourself, Angie, and Neda were in the committee to choose, so you all went through all of the applications thoroughly?
Correct.
And they were the best ones?
Yes. They're actually the most...
So, you feel comfortable in working with this agency?
Yes, yes.
Okay, no further questions, Mayor?
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A motion carries, 311 is approved, ma'am.
Thank you.
Call for 4.1. Do I hear a motion to untable the agenda?
I make a motion to untable the agenda.
We have a motion to untable, do I hear a second?
Second.
We are, first and second to untable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and we have 4.1, Ms. Osorio, please address it, you're recognized by the chair.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.1 is authorization to engage with negotiations with M2 Engineering, PLLC, for the City of Mission design manual update. This item was last tabled by the planning, by the city council, but M2 Engineering was the only vendor that submitted a bid and met all of the specifications that were required. Staff and city manager are recommending approval of item 4.1.
Good. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this is opening for discussion, any discussion?
I have a concern.
Go ahead.
We're, can I, can I?
Go ahead, yes.
Yes, okay. I know it's just $28,000, but we can't have that mentality that it's just $28,000. The standards manual, I understand, hasn't been updated since 1984, is that correct?
Somewhere around there.
Okay, but I can guarantee you that we're not using the standards that were in 1984, because if that was the case, we would be using 1-inch asphalt and, you know, 8-inch pipes. We're not doing that. There's not, I don't feel an urgency to update this manual, because staff does not use this as a go-to. There may be some money from our bond money that we can use for these types of things, and I think we can wait on items like this, especially in our financial condition. So, I'm against this.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Calling for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
No.
Motion passes 4 to 1. 5.0, 5.1, city manager's comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do want to extend our thoughts and prayers to the family of Chupar Moises Sanchez for his passing and continue prayer for them on this difficult time. Also, I do want to inform the public that the City of Mission offices will be closed on Monday due to Labor Day, September 2nd. And then also wanted to wish our students a great and successful new academic year that began the school year. And then also just to remind the public about the two events of honoring the children battling cancer on Wednesday, September 11th, and September 25th at 7:15 at Banworth Park. It's definitely a great event that we're preparing for and looking forward to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. 5.2, Mayor's comment, again, I just want to thank staff for an excellent job, and especially those that attended the planning, the planning meeting that I know you, a lot of the directors gave up their Saturday morning, you know, to do the planning part for the November 9th Veterans Parade, but at the size of the group, we are moving it into the city hall for, on November 14th, if you want to give, those that are in the audience, and you want to give some feedback, or give the name of a veteran that wants to ride the, we're going to have 60 golf carts out there, you know, Ida Lerma has been, has been voluntold and volunteered, and because of her skills that she has, to be able to head the logistic part of this parade. And Ms. Lerma, thank you for being there on Saturday also, as far as that is concerned. Also, I would like to address the comment to our city managers and those that have, that are connected to this comment that I'm gonna make, and that is, we need to start the process for all city property that's in, that has been declared by FEMA, that there's not, they're not in the flood zone, to be able to apply, to be able to apply, so that designation can be able to be removed from our city properties. I know the MEDC has 88 acres in that, but there's others also. And then we need to notify, we need to notify all the residents, you know, send out a notice to the residents through either a website or a letter of a residence that are affected, that they are eligible to apply, you know, and the application is, obviously, they're probably gonna have to hire a professional engineer to assist them in them, but to remove that FEMA stigma on their property, so be able to begin to build that, build those properties, so we can have more buildings and more facilities in our city limits, which means that our property value will go up, and we'll go beyond 4 billion if we publish that, as far as that is concerned. And without further ado, I'll call for 5.3, city council comments, and I'll start with Mr. Vella.
No comment.
No discussion.
I don't have any additional comments.
Mr. Plata?
No, I just want to say that fortunately, we had to increase the taxes, but we're gonna work very diligently to make sure every penny is spent wisely. I know the staff has done a great job, but I think the more that we look at the budget, the better for everybody, and I would like to recommend maybe in the future, you know, have more budget workshops, and by the first, second quarter of our fiscal year, I mean, we can find out what position we're at, and not try to, you know, make decisions, you know, pretty much at a, with so much pressure, and, but we're working hard for our citizens, but there's other things that needed to be done in order for us to continue providing great services with a very safe community, and we must pay our citizens accordingly, especially also our public safety.
Yes, I have two comments. Chief, so proud of your staff, and I saw that wonderful video that our media department put together this morning. You, along with your staff, and DPS, and a lot of law enforcement, took Corporal Spedias Piguera's son to his first day of school, and that was just so beautiful, thank you for that. And with that being said, that just says how united we are as a community, and my comment would be also with Mr. Plata about the taxes. While this was a very extremely difficult decision, that took us many hours of talking and talking and discussing, it is always in the best interest of our community. We want to maintain and improve infrastructure and our excellent city services for our children and for our children's children. We could not do this, that, without these changes. We must be physically responsible, and that includes boosting our general fund balance. We're here to serve our constituents, and in order to do that, we had to make this tough decision. Hand in hand with our community, we must create a healthy fund balance for unforeseen events, to enhance public safety, and also to continue to produce opportunities for our great City of Mission. Thank you.
Any other comment? I will entertain the motion then, for the executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section 551.001. Do I hear a motion?
I'm moved.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and we're gonna deliberate under executive session, and we'll be back when we finish.
Mayor, I'm moved to reconvene.
The chair has recognized Mr. Plata as with a motion, do I hear a second?
For the picture, I termed it.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second to, a motion that Mr. Plata has asked for to reconvene from the executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section 551.001. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we reconvene, and then I'll call for 6.1, and I'll address Mr. Martinez or legal.
Thank you, Mayor. Right in this session, it is, this session has been, what is it, a motion needed to convey, to authorize the city manager and the mayor to, to, to convey the 1.67 acre tract of land along the western edge of that subfield subdivision, pending a proper agreement.
Okay. Do I hear some, the council member turning in his comments into motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
A second. Any discussion before, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved to adjourn.
Second.
Have a second? Yes, I do. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and we are adjourned.